I want to call this February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting the order. The meeting, you want to lead us in pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which sustains one condition under its will, liberty and justice for all.
State County Commission will now reconvene as the Board of Equalization and Review. Is there anybody? No one here to oppose a propose anything to do with the Board of Equalization Review? There's no one appears to protest and no hearings were scheduled. I would like to make a motion to sign order to adjourn signing that. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
This is my management. This is how I check.
There's a story.
Yeah, I do normally check them out, but I don't have to scribble through all of these checks.
Any going his honorations or or terror?
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the real estate sonoration presented this morning.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Eddie?
I didn't want to bring out one thing. I sent an email to you. I got a text or an email about a tax reform yesterday and they said, hey, there's a lot of data can make changes to the incremental payments unless there's a letter sent down. You can do it through the locker book.
Didn't we do that last year?
Yeah, it was still in May, where you had to submit it with what the thank you. We just have to send it back from the middle.
Thank you. I'm making motion to approve the second half payroll twenty-four.
Second, all in favor?
Joe, look at it. Commissioners have any question? I have them. Ruth, anything on there that stands out, you think? Yes, small. I make a motion to approve vouchers and invoices.
Second.
All in favor? I think John.
Okay, I've got to make a motion to approve the minutes for January eighteenth, February one, February seven, February thirteenth.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I looked at this yesterday. Oh, okay. I'm making motion to approve the estate settlements.
Second.
All in favor? Ruth, you want to go ahead with your list while I'm signing this, everything here?
Yeah, the first thing is the request that says you have to fill out four electronic voting machines. Where you can select them. And they are here if you have questions.
Have you got sent an agreement to Anthony about those voting machines? About? Have you seen one, Anthony?
No.
Okay. Will you let her know what you're looking for in agreement?
Um, Fayetteville submitted. I can identify with the question. The commission agreed to use the voting machine for the last for an agreement that defined how the city would maintain their public interest and provide the voting machines. We can give you a copy of what they asked. And I think when we got the after we got the initial agreement, have we ever been passed for Fayetteville to submit? Since considering the calorie and the integrity and the security in that. Make sure you get both of those on.
I guess I had the last one about how the security.
Well, there's there's an agreement. There's an agreement to do with that.
Michelle, do you have any concerns? Okay.
That will it'll be a quite a more complicated because they're two wards. But I'll work with them about it. You know, figure out as far as how we're handling them. And early that we have some issues about early that you know, so yeah. We have a show after this.
One thing, she lives in the town.
I know where I live.
I move we approve the request pending the entering the same agreement we had with Oak Hill. I mean, Fayetteville.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming down.
Yeah, I don't know. Did you have another item for us?
She knows that.
To have our election with the county to build the process of doing that. We have, well, we're planning to have that ballot, have a measure on our ballots for our citizens to vote, to have our election with you. But we wanted your approval before we went ahead with that.
Well, we can put it on our March first agenda and, you know, I mean, I can tell you right now I'd support that.
That is, you know, they had a deal about that last year from the fourth fact.
Right.
And we're one of the few that does not do that now. It would be a good savings for us. And I think we're getting a little overs.
I do too.
But we just want to see how the citizens feel, so it will be on our ballot.
Now, how would it change the ballot? That would.
It would just go to the end of everything else.
After everything else.
Yeah.
Just on the certain just for some people.
Okay. I'm going to ask crazy question. The way that it lines up, you'll have some it's sort of in a longer term. Others into it.
Sure. The council that's getting elected in June. It's a three-year term for those.
Okay. Because I said like, how many exactly happened? And we put Ruth, will you put it on more?
That's I think it's it'll save you some money.
So we'll take care of it on March first.
Number two, Ruth.
So this is a request from Bridge Valley for CDL residents.
Hello, welcome, good morning.
You want to come up to developments?
Is it on? I guess it's on. Yeah, just that way everybody can hear.
I have a large voice anyway, but I'm Russell Sauger. I'm the new dean of Bridge Valley of Workforce and Economic Development. And this request from the commission is to expand our commercial driver license program to the city of Montgomery. Pathfinder and grid buildings are currently vacant. And I spoke with the mayor as well, just so you know. And the DOL grant that we're pursuing is for demolition of those two buildings, which costs Bridge Valley about $200,000 a year in utilities and maintenance. But that area will provide us over an acre of flat paved land to expand our current commercial driver's license program from Milton to the city. So we ask that the commission support that. We know there's a shortage of commercial, you know, CDL drivers. And we're excited to move forward with this project and apply for the grant from the Department of Labor. So we just ask that you support that.
So you just you just need a support letter to for the grant application?
Yes.
No funding involved.
I move that we approve the support letter for the CDL program.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's okay, thank you.
And if it's as good as the one that they have in Chent, it stays passed. Every six weeks, he's turning over another plan.
Yes, I just received a request, just, you know, good information for everyone to know. Thirty-three individuals from Frontier just from one company.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so this is definitely needed. And, you know, I'm a lifelong resident of West Virginia, specifically Logan County. I've been thirty-one years with higher ed. And but I moved from Southern Western Indian Community and Technical College to Bridge Valley last August.
Well, congratulations, Montgomery's my home town.
And you were you were down there when I was putting in the pipeline systems.
There you go.
Yeah.
Y'all can know where Ronnie and I were being.
Yeah.
So his daughter Samantha and my son are engaged. They're physicians at W.
Yeah.
I figured.
Well, Amy works Samantha's mother works with him.
Yes, yes, that is right. Yeah, I love it. I love it. But anyway, thank you all very much. If you have any questions?
No, we don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number three is is Smithers here?
I don't see anybody. I'm waiting for names on number four. I just sent another text about that.
I thought we had something.
She well, we have a letter saying pick who you want.
Oh, I thought there was. Maybe I'm looking at tomorrow.
They told me the ones they were thinking of.
Is Smithers here, Ruth, or is it?
They can't make it up because the roads are.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's just entering the order. Brian got the order.
Yeah. We have to change something before we sign it.
Okay. All right. So we.
It's one very minor cycle.
Okay.
So can we motion to what's already been approved again?
Well, it's been approved, but what happened was I when I was doing all those back minute, when I was behind on the minutes, I noticed we hadn't. I texted him. I texted Ruth to see if we'd received the order from him.
This simply reflects what the commission did and then it gets your report in the shell.
Okay, yeah, so it's basically, we just need to sign the order. So I I say we go ahead and vote that we sign the order once corrected. And and then it'll be done. So I move that we approve the order and have it stand once corrected.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And you're waiting on the public defender.
So we don't have anybody for that. I am, I asked yesterday.
Well, if you know, we can move on to number five.
Yeah, go ahead and move on.
Yeah, let's move on to number.
So the number five, part of the discussion, just to let y'all know. The Department of Highway, five of your letters. The first one was you guys requested a safety study to be performed on Route nineteen specifically around the gorge bridge up to US sixty. And they are going to conduct a traffic study to that section of roadway evaluating traffic, crash data. And also Kenny's Creek Road. The sentence currently passable for the traveling public, conditional bank of language prepares need to be performed and those are supposed to be started during the twenty twenty-three summer season.
Was it? I wonder if that's they still have a closed sign on, so it's that's they still had the closed sign on. I mean, that's confusing that that says it's passable, but they got a close.
You know, I'm just gonna say, if you have a closed sign, I don't think it stops anybody.
We wouldn't stop they either. The tourists, they would probably stop. In some cases, people still bust through doors too.
And then the other one was the concern regarding large trucks using half go road.
Yes.
And current laws do not allow the rest of the department to restrict any vehicle of legal weight and dimension from using any public or even state highways. Accordingly, our practice is to install is to install warning signs that alert drivers on conditions are unsuitable for large trucks. Does that mean?
Yeah.
And they reviewed and said there are sufficient sufficient warning signs in place. I'd say you can thank Google.
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to measure if it's fourteen foot off the side of the road, back in weeds. And you cannot see it when you're coming southbound on nineteen to make that turn when you miss six twelve. You can't see that sign until it's too late when you're down at the bottom of the hill. So I'm going to fight that one.
But I think what they're saying is they can't restrict it.
No, but they could put up other signs to show them, hey, other than one in the weeds, you can put one out so you can see it when you're turning southbound nineteen.
All right, that's all I got.
So.
Next.
That's it. That's crazy.
If you know all those Google Maps, it takes you to.
They get stuck in the town of Fayetteville. They get stuck down near my house where they can't make those ninety-degree.
Ninety-degree turns, yeah.
I mean, I've had to, I have a long driveway right at the end of Thomas, so. You know, I've actually told truck, you come back, I'll move my vehicle so you can back up in my driveway and get out. You know, it's been that ridiculous.
You ready for Teresa?
What are they?
Ready? Oh, the question is, is Teresa ready for us?
Oh, she's ready. No question in my mind.
We don't have our budget. Maybe.
You don't.
It's okay. So this is just the wages and salaries projected for twenty-three twenty-four. And these numbers do represent salary investments that were approved by you all in December. Thank you for that. So the increase there, one thousand four hundred and three dollars will directly be in. And again, these numbers are all projected at the highest in vacant positions, so it's possibly less than that. But that would be. Based on all the good news. We have increased in many ways that you all know in the program over there. So through user data for monitoring and GPS monitoring, the total number per day of days, per day of sales system would equal one or one billion and thirty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars. So that's that's very good thing. And that's it, like I said, a team member, you all know that it's that's not a lot to do with their report, but it's the username report. We appreciate that very much.
She just surpassed Anthony and the one who saved us the most.
Yeah.
Old child last year and has half a million. She's got a million.
And that is, like I said, a team effort.
She's giving you credit, Anthony.
Interestingly enough, if I were to break it, well, I get to break it down. But our GPS monitoring has went down. There's less use of that and more use of the actual data report center. And I'm hoping this is the services that they need more than anything else. So the GPS monitoring has went down, which is a savings because we don't get a lot of money back from it anyway. So that's actually given. That's all probably real money. As far as actual revenue, collections and reimbursements, I've heard again in the in two six-month periods, there you can see we did substantially better in from July to December. But in next year, I will be able to report on fiscal year only without a lot of calendar year numbers. But for January to December twenty twenty-two, maybe five thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars in cash collections that were deposited. I see the reason that that will exceed a hundred thousand next year. We have one new revenue source we're looking at that will start any day now. As far as expenditures, anything unforeseen, obviously unforeseen, but we're going to head and the only thing I can say that when the problem is we network. But grant is due next month and I will be asking the grants, this this day grant to give us money for able to. So we'll roster fingers to see what happens. Lastly, the grant funding, you all know, last year we were awarded one hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred and eighty.
Hey, Teresa, on on that vehicle, would you be willing to meet with Katie Johnson? And she works for in was it Prevention Coalition, Abby?
Yeah, she works for the health department.
But for the health department. I have been wanting to to try to come up with some idea to be able to transport teens in the evenings to team programming, team court specifically. And I think that would marry into DRC's mission, the team court in particular, because but but there might be a way to take funding from that and from what you're getting to get a more flexible vehicle or, you know, something like a mini bus or something, you know, something where we can transport kids and we could transport, you know, adults during the day and kids in the evening or something like that. I don't know. I mean, it it might, I know Ruth might say no, but 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 I'm just thinking out of the box, because when we have these vehicles like this that can provide transport, we have transportation issues for our programming in the county. I just want to figure out how we can make the best use of it.
Well, it sounds wonderful because as far as I've concerned, vehicles, that's a large sum of money. And if you don't use them to their full potential, if you you have them sitting around, that's not good. Is if you need them and you have them, you need to use them, they need to be used. Otherwise, it's just other ways to live.
That would love to see, you know, we might even be able to pay somebody overtime to drive them or, you know, whatever. But, yeah, we can definitely do that. I will reach out.
Lastly, the community service hours. They were slightly lower than they were for the first six months of the year. But we directly attribute that to the program and services that they receive over there because they're doing sometimes two groups a day and individuals in all their classes. So we're very careful about whether we keep in versus the ones that are available for community service. It's a constant surface of judgment bodies and time. So it's going and it's steady now versus unstable. Twenty-seven thousand dollars, a little over twenty-seven thousand dollars is at the minimum wage rate for the county agencies for the county year. On the line items, I did ask for, other than the above, the top section, which is the obvious increases in the salary and benefits. On contracted services, I did ask for a three thousand dollar increase. And that's due to the amount of testing that we're doing on for your analysis after the courts. And so DHHR, so we're spending a lot more in drug testing supply and lab services. I don't believe it'll be that much, but I don't want to go over, especially if there's, and again, another increase of a thousand dollars on the materials and supply specifically for drug testing item. I don't think it'll go over, but they did get a small increase already on some of the items we use. And we're paying the new twenty twenty-three prices now, so just in case that will go up more, I don't want us to go over. That's all I have, just quick breakdowns of the total of four hundred fifty-one thousand two hundred and eighty. Just for example, if you were subtracting grant, we have now in a total amount and the revenue is eighty-five thousand. That leaves one hundred and sixty-nine thousand for the county to pick up. And that's the highest.
Have you had any more time to look into opening a site in Montgomery or learn that with the board?
I do, but the grants committee is very busy this summer here with with all some great and applications too. But I think from what I've what have the people that I've already talked to, I think the letter of support or letter of interest may be from you all to the grant and to maybe Kenone County because the grant committee will want us to partner with Kenone County because it is so close to the line. And I don't know what the possibility of either maybe checking with Clay County, if they would be utilizing services.
Questioned up, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. From East Bank.
March, when it makes sense.
Up to Gully Bridge and in Clay, that could help Clay County quite a bit.
Yeah, it really could. Well, here here's where, I mean, we might be able to fund some of it too. Kenone County seems to have a lot of money to fund things. So I don't think we would be entirely dependent on grants for it. So the mayor of Montgomery has property down there that he might be able to donate.
Oh, yeah, he even said he would try to work and have people.
So I feel like it would be a huge financial investment to get it started. And then it should sustain, given how your programming is working so far, it should sustain itself all the time.
We have, our governor has two runs now in the in the morning. We have this side and we have a valley from everything through Gully Bridge up sixty-one. So we've got the participation, the participation.
Right.
The the issue with the the grant committee, they authorize their report systems. They want it to be collaboration with another county if we have. And and they they want to they want to send an agreement before they approve you to open. Before they, I don't know how far I would be stepping out of bounds if we started using a building down there or all of it, you know.
So what you're saying is we need to send a letter could support to Kenone County to see if they will send a letter and we and we both agree on having this together in Montgomery. And if we both agree on it, that will give you the lift to move forward.
Yeah, I think a couple of things. First of all, I think it would help if you reached out and kept Clark's, at Kenone County.
And the president of Clay County.
Clay County. And then, and then, I mean, we can send them a formal letter, but I think if you reached out to them and tell them it's coming, talk to them about it, tell them that, you know, and you know, that we've been kind of sitting on whatever investment we're going to make in the Valley District from the ARPA funding. So we've got some, you know, we haven't discussed how much or committed the amount, but but we have funding that we have been waiting. But because Boise got funded in an earmark, so that was one of the potential projects. So DRC is another potential project. So we've had some things that we've been watching and trying to see what we might do down there. And so I think I think Commissioner Luis is reaching out for those two commissions, then us getting a letter together for, did you write something up? For at least for the side of things. Draft that and get it to Ruth and then and then we can our office can put something together to the other commissions about what we want to do, taking some language from your letter. And then, so send it to us somewhere, please. And then, and then, and then we can get those on, Ruth will put them on a March agenda and we can get that going and he can make the call. So maybe we can.
They just need the numbers too.
So you're worried that the grant that the grant people like just wouldn't approve a DRC.
I think they would be open to it, so they're in us do the work to collaborate and
Yeah.
And I think the it would be best to talk to the government and the contacts there. The other day, the report goes there, I think their budget is actually that much.
Yeah.
So I I'm not sure.
They'll do anything that makes them look good, listen here. I mean.
And it's it's probably out of their way where they're looking. I don't know where there is. Yeah, we'll see that that would work together, that would work better. It being located down there, then they it'd be the same way them coming up here.
Too, they got the PRT.
Yeah.
And BHHR will pay that bus fare for people to take the bus to get to Montgomery from Kenone County. Another thing, though, is you have a board. So we've got to get, if you could, you know, we our stuff is going to gauge, we're going to send letters to gauge interest and but can you, in the meantime, get with Anthony and and try to get some approval by the board to go ahead and start pursuing that idea or if the board agrees, that is. But because we can't act independently, but we have, I I personally have great interest in seeing that open.
Oh, I do too. I think it's and last night we talked about it a little bit.
Did y'all?
Yeah, we talked about it a little bit and he's willing to support it too. I mean, he's he's willing to, I think he, yeah, I think he, I think he even said building. I think he even mentioned somebody to oversee it maybe a little bit or somebody, but I know they probably stipulations.
His city.
Even write them to work.
Used to oversee everybody that's swimming with send down and stuff, so they're. Yeah, so it was, so it's it's, I mean, I don't, I hate to say easy, but as far as something like this goes, you know, they're really, it's
Putting the pieces together.
Right now, the conditions are optimal to do it. I think we've. Right now, the conditions are optimal to do it. I think we've we've got some. Funding, at least on this side, we're willing to put into it. We've got some, we've got a lot of interest in participation. We've got the mayor Montgomery's support and the building. You know, it it probably wouldn't be that huge, you know.
It it kind of is like hitting a moving target just to get started, but. Part of it would be right in the target with all the, I don't know, I'm just probably misstating, but with the viewing money out there, the settlements with what's coming in. Then you have the suboxone and the MAT programs everywhere now, every independent.
We have the Montgomery Hospital down there, we can partner with them on that.
Exactly, so with that comes counseling.
In the college.
Support service. Exactly, so there is an abundance of peer support, substance abuse counseling, um. A good quality education and training that would is already in place and available. I mean, if if location and customers and it would be. It it would be a wonderful program.
Well, let people serve in their own community, do their community service in their own communities.
Yeah.
Um it would be nice. And if we get our dilapidated housing program together, that might be something that takes. Hope for this. But Anthony's been in enough meetings that you know what are interested on that stuff when when the board meets. Um I I think the time is is right if you feel like, now I noticed that you're down staff, so that's another issue to consider, but.
That's another issue, but that was the purpose of asking for those physicians is to prepare for. Right, and well, we're pretty busy as it is, but yes. And then that way there is somebody at least hands one to get something started before we would, if whatever, taking more staff.
That's ridiculous. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When you talk to. Okay, when you talk to Kent Carper. Um just tell him it would be from East Bank.
Anybody who wants to participate in it.
Yeah.
I mean, the KRT runs all the way down, they might not want to go.
Well, it it would probably be up to Correctional Center in Canola County. Yeah. And the commission and the court and 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 be up and and everybody work together on what jurisdiction it would probably be correct. So, you know, I don't think we can dictate, I think they would work out a uh. The the jur- jurisdiction or the areas, what they would probably do.
Allows multiple counties to go in.
And do it, yeah.
Going on a DRC center.
Ultimately, it's going to be who the court says, like like now, so say Anthony has a case, but he has somebody who lives closer to Nicholas County. I don't know who we cooperate with now, but depending on the program, the court may say, okay, this person can be monitored in Nicholas County. It just depends on the case and the court's discretion and what he says, but. Um that's, the court's going to order it, so the it would be up to the defense attorneys. We would have to let the public defender's office over there know. That it's an option and stuff like that, so then they could ask the court to let their clients go to this joint one. Probably.
And in Clay County, their budget is like a two million dollars.
And the magistrate's.
Very, very.
But you know, uh just on on that, on that stretch though, if we ever did consider having magistrate court down there one day, you know, a month or something. That would be a place they could do it, you know.
We're doing misdemeanors down there now, right?
That's.
Are we?
That seemed to be kind of up in the air, but it sounded to me that I heard is that Montgomery just wanted to look. Pursuing every misdemeanor they can through their municipal court.
Yeah, through the municipal court, but it but having county court down there, magistrate court. They used to do that and it might, you know, at least there would, it would provide a location for that, like we could set it up that way so that we could. Whole court down there if it chose to, because that's another thing, you know, Greg was have been advocating.
Yeah, I think you're.
Of course, he advocated after he, you know.
Yeah, yeah, he did that wrong way, but anyway, all right. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you so much.
I guess the bid opening for the new for. Opportunity of a new pool. Oh, wow. No, this is crazy. Well, this is the only one, well.
We had seven companies express interest. Um that one is the only one that I received in communications with another company out of. Roanoke, Virginia, but they did not put their proposal on.
I know one thing, what I understand, so there is. One of the commission. You probably already know.
So it's it stopped being the million dollar baby and now it's almost a three million dollar baby.
Yo, I I I don't. I know you you can't. Yeah, since I work for him, I mean. But I mean, I don't even think. I don't even know what, I didn't even know they were doing this, so.
Did, did you hear, did you tell her about that Boy Scout pool? So. We found out, we had a um.
Well, we gotta, we still have to do this first, we have to announce with the.
Yeah, you should.
The amount. The the what estimate for the uh. New pool. Has a two million eight hundred ninety nine thousand dollars.
So the uh gentleman who was in point of contact there did say that. Should you want to entertain conversations with him, you might have some other options that are slightly outside of the scope of the RFP. To bring the cost down slightly such as, uh so he wrote that proposal the way that the RFP was written yesterday, explained to me. There may be some other options for cost savings. Example, building a pool inside the existing pool, so instead of taking all of the money of like. Tearing it all up, hauling all of that away, um all the concrete, asphalt and stuff like that. You could then pour, I don't know how this works exactly, you could pour a smaller pool inside.
Yeah, it just wouldn't be Olympic size. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I I.
Now.
That's not a bad idea.
I don't.
It would be, it would be, yeah, it would be a very large uh. Believe me, a very large difference.
So that is.
I mean, I would be willing to entertain that with the commission.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, a Roanoke uh national pools, but also trying to do.
Well, and I think I was getting ready to say, I I think if we're going to allow someone to give ideas outside of scope of the RFP, then we need to open that back up.
As we say, we can put out a new.
Let's put out a new. Yeah.
Yeah, because that's a big undertaking. Of the way, the way it was written, the way it was presented. That's a big undertaking. That's a big job. This is a sl- a flat, a splash pad, stuff like that. These are other prices above and beyond extras, right? Did you look at this? Or a splash pad?
I know, because we currently have a waiting pool, I know from what they've said, waiting pools are a thing of the past, splash pads are what people are doing in the future. So I'm guessing that's where you put that. Um I've heard the comments that diving ports aren't as popular now. Slides are more uh popular now, so that was something that they had to let me be doing.
Little days are gone.
Yeah, I think we ought to put this uh back up. And change the uh. To uh use the existing and.
So on the Boy Scout pool.
Yeah.
Um we had a Zoom meeting, Commissioner Luisis and I did while we were down in our song bridge, moving property, way you use the direction of Boy Scouts now. About just how the Boy Scouts can help the county. And among the things, you know, I was just growing, so we were just throwing stuff out there like here in town, charities and what we need. Trails was one that uh will probably be putting you in touch with them about, so they could direct the trail building activities to the county instead of to the national park, which. Or their own trail building, have their own full-time people to do that, actually. Um so that was one, but another one was, I was like, uh. Our pool was, they have Olympic sized portable pools that they put up there for.
How does that work? Does it look like, you know, they drive by somebody's house, they have an above ground pool, is it like?
It is above ground.
Like how?
It is above ground, but anyway, they they have two of them that they have for those amber reeds.
Yeah.
That he has no interest in either of the, I guess. Liability or whatever, but but anyway, he said that he wouldn't give you that. So I want to put you in touch with him to explore the feasibility of having that, because obviously that means you would have to hire lifeguards.
Right, but we would love to um meet into the pool.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna text you.
I will write a personalized thank you note.
I'm going to text you his contact information, so you can uh contact them about it and just tell him.
But it's a three billion dollar baby, if we are gifted a pool.
But just tell him that that um we asked you to give him a call.
I will. That's great. I'm curious.
I want to see a picture on the street.
How it works, obviously it does give you successful amber reeds, but um.
I uh. I'll make a motion to pursue other options for a pool. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I just texted you as contact.
Okay, y'all want a break?
Yes.
Or you want to take Anthony's? Okay, okay, Ruth.
Or else.
All right, uh bring the meeting back to order with the ten o'clock public hearing, Boy Scouts bond amendment. Mr. Stunt, do you want to come up and?
Warring commissioners. So the purpose of the public hearing. It was approved by the commission on February the first. Is to allow members of the public to speak. Operating comments regarding bonds that have been issued. And proposed to be read it for the benefit of the Boy Scouts. And also regarding the project itself. This is an Internal Revenue Service requirement because the bond you're issued on a tax exempt basis. There's no. Obligation on the county holding the hearing, it's simply a requirement that we. Give the members of the public an opportunity to speak on the project and the bonds. Open the public hearing.
Well, I'll go ahead and ask some questions if if uh. Certainly, absolutely. Now, the Boy Scouts of America is the borrower.
Right.
And Arrow is the landholder.
Yes, that's correct.
Let's see here. And it's a commercial development revenue bonds.
Correct, under what, thirteen two C, yes, sir.
And it they it's, let's see here. So Arrow, let's see. The Boy Scouts is tax exempt. And a five oh one C. I'm just reading from this just to get a gist of everything here and. Arrow is in, is a nonprofit West Virginia corporation?
Yes, sir.
So what, why is it a commercial? Development revenue bonds? What, why, if it's, if both of them are uh tax exempt?
Uh because that's how the statute refers to them. Uh and it just calls it a commercial development revenue bond and that's what the name we're required to use under thirteen two C. Um thirteen two C allows any corporation. To issue bonds for the various purposes that are enumerated under the under code section and um. Both Arrow and um and Boy Scouts are corporations. But I mean, I understand your question regarding commercial. And commercial i- is again just the name they require, the statute requires to use for the bonds. So it doesn't limit, a commercial activities are defined as. Any activity, business activity that's undertaken by a corporation. And this is the structure that's used by. Hospitals across the state, not-for-profit hospitals across the state, uh the finance, for example. Their uh their capital, whether it's WVU Medicine or. TMC or Catlinton Hospital, they all use the same, the same protection.
All right, so I got, let's see, it's something else here. Okay, currently the property is in Arrow. There's a statement in here says that the. See, there's. It will continue to be an Arrow leased or otherwise conveyed to Arrow. By Arrow to a borrower, a borrower. The other Boy Scouts camps, or is it that way, is it? That the way they're done? Just can you explain the reason? What, neck it'll, if if the bond's paid off, will then what go to and the Boy Scouts, what's the reason for that call over there? I'm just.
Why is it held by Arrow? Um it.
And that they have a right to either lease it?
Right, and they do lease it to the BSA.
Okay, what is the lease number?
Ah it's.
I'm just. Dollar, okay, just curious, I'm just curious about that.
So like Rob and Alex, Rob and Ken.
A dollar per year?
Christine, I know, I'm sorry. Rob and Christine are both employees at BSA. So uh and everybody there at the facility is an employee at the BSA here, it's a holding company. It it's a lot like creating an LLC for a business. If you've got multiple businesses, you have separate LLCs, it's the same type of structure. So Arrow, uh my understanding, and I don't represent Boy Scouts outside of West Virginia, but. My understanding is there are other high adventure camps, other properties are held in LLCs as well, separate or separate, excuse me, separate corporations.
So the borrower is responsible for the bonds. But is Arrow responsible for the bonds also?
Technically, yes, but Arrow has no assets other than the properties themselves.
So is the property collateral?
It is not. The property is not collateral.
Okay.
Pledge viable scouts. Uh uh future revenues.
Okay, that's.
Yeah. There's no deed address.
Okay. Very interesting. Um I look at it as Office of Arrow is a file cabinet. And they have all of the properties for the Boy Scouts in all the states, just in folders. Let's see what other questions I have here. Marked all over this thing and I think to think out what else. The exhibit A one and exhibit A two. Uh there's two blank pieces of paper back here is is uh.
Those were forwarded under a different email, they're the existing. Documents, we have copies of them, but.
Is there an amortization schedule on it?
There is not, no, it's not an amortization schedule. The memo that I sent you all includes. That payment is basically those payments in that memo are the payments that are made on a um annual or.
Annual, annual basis?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, I do remember seeing that.
Right, so.
I think I, I think after you questioned it, you sent it to us.
Right, no, you did, you you asked about it and you um. Went back and got that, then you had asked me in the last meeting about the interest rate, and I had mistaken you said the interest rate is going to be modified. It's actually not being modified, it's been kept at the existing rates, which are three point two two percent and two point nine four percent. But the monthly, I'm sorry, it wasn't annual, it was monthly interest payments for the first two years, it's interest only for the first two years. Are four hundred and sixty four thousand dollars and change. And then the quarterly principal payments, which kicked in after two years, go out for an additional eight years. Are one million. Three hundred ninety seven thousand dollars. Now that's an average, it changes a few dollars. Every quarter, but that's basically where you're at, one million three hundred ninety seven thousand dollars on a quarterly basis. So your annual payment is. Five point six.
Yeah, so the Boy Scouts of America. Is the one that's. Libel for paying the bond. Arrow has no liability at all.
Other than the, they're obligated contractually, but they have an asset. So the bank understands that, they didn't, they didn't have any assets in front of them.
Well, I think it's right now, it's all the questions I have. Wish Michael's either on Zoom or on his way.
He's on Zoom, but he said he'd be here in a couple of minutes.
Does he have a commission serving presence?
How how are the bond secured?
They're secured by a pledge by the Boy Scouts of future um. For requests and also revenues. So it's a pledge of revenue, it's a revenue pledge.
And the property isn't securing it in any way?
Your property is not secured, it's like. Or excuse me, bonds.
Scout craft. Since I I'll go ahead and go to something else here, I got this thing so marked up and. Since I'd go ahead and go to something else here, I got this thing so marked up, I wish I wrote a list. It's basically supposed to be used just to train uh, the girls and boys in scout craft.
That's the purpose of the scouts, the language you're referring to. Commissioner came directly from the National Charter enacted by Congress.
Okay.
So it's, it's the, the purpose of the scouts is to. Train them, train it, it's. The organization cooperation with other agencies, engage in promotion, ability of boys and girls to do things for themselves and others. We train them in scout craft, and that's capitalized because it was. Capitalized in the uh. In the charter.
Yeah, so mainly, this is facility is. Supposed to be provided just for the scout craft of the boys and girls.
Correct, yes, that's its primary purpose, absolutely.
Well. The way it's. To me, the way it should be, the way it's supposed to be is the only purpose.
Well. That certainly, uh. I understand your interpretation of that. The. That language is, is the purpose of the Boy Scouts.
Tax exempt.
Tax exempt, that's.
The reason, yes, tax exempt, that's it.
That's right, yeah, that's, that's. That's the purpose that qualifies them under five oh one C three of the code. And any activities that they engage in that are outside five oh one, outside their taxes and purpose are unrelated business. Under the tax code. So long as it's not a charitable purpose, I mean, if they have an event or a governmental entity, then that may not be considered unrelated business.
The final hearing of the bankruptcy schedule.
The appeal, it's under an appeal right now, the appeal hearing was a week ago today. The hearing before the bankruptcy judge. And um, the judge at that time said. It will take a period of time to issue an order. Um, that's not, you know, obviously, it's a judge, judge does whatever the judge wants, so we don't know when the judge will actually enter.
And the order will be the final act in the entirety of the bankruptcy proceeding.
Correct. And when that occurs, as soon thereafter as possible. Hopefully, a couple of days, scouts will like to emerge from bankruptcies. And that also triggers the ability to make payments. Uh, to the victims. Out of the victim's fund.
Where is it? Which uh, court is this?
It's in federal district, federal circuit court. And I apologize, I can get that information through the commission, I can't recall. Delaware, I'm sorry, Delaware Federal, Federal Circuit, whatever circuit is Delaware.
Let me take a quick poll, son.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Yep.
Bring the meeting back to order, and. I guess the next thing is, I just want to see if there's any other public comment on the hearing. Anybody on Zoom? Well, this time, I want to make a motion to table, uh, the vote to a future date.
I'll second.
All in favor? Alright. Anthony? You want to pledge a presentation?
And John, John, you got a copy of that letter that we sent? You did not get a copy of the letter that we sent?
I noticed you at this point. Or was it actually, yeah, it's included in.
Okay, be sure that, will you share that with Rob, please?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I wouldn't see.
Did you give him the full letter?
If it's not, just let me know, and I'll resend it right now, absolutely.
You did, I'm sorry, I thought.
If you want to discuss that after you read it, Rob, just give us a call. Okay.
Thank you.
You ready?
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners, um, appreciate the opportunity to, well. Present the budget for prosecutor's office for the third time. Um, at the risk of uh, beating a dead horse, I do want to talk briefly about the jail bill.
Is it that horse you, and you pat yourself on the back?
In fairness, in fairness, um. The majority of.
I needed that laugh.
The majority of the work that's done on the jail bill is not done by me, it's done by my staff. So it's to pat my staff on the back.
Okay.
Um, I mean, we, you know, I came up with the um, policy to make it a priority. But um, important thing from the county's perspective, and speaking with Ruth, I believe, last year. Uh, last fiscal year, it ended up averaging around eighty-seven thousand dollars a month, we're now down to six thousand dollars a month. Um, and the important issue, last year, we budgeted one point three six million. For the jail bill, I think at this point, it would be reasonable for the county commission to reduce. The budgeted amount down to one point two million, which is a hundred thousand uh, per month. With an eighty-seven thousand dollar, or I'm sorry, an eighty-six thousand dollar a month average. Um, that's the equivalent of seventeen. A hundred and twenty, what I call inmate days, and that's basically the ability for us to keep. One inmate in jail for that, that many days. So essentially, I think if we reduce it down to one point two million. Um, it still gives us approximately a sixteen percent buffer each month, uh, in case the jail bill goes up. Um, but I think it would be reasonable at this point to reduce the budgeted amount down to one point two million. The other thing that is really amazing to me is that the biggest savings is simply going over the jail bill and looking for the state. Specifically, what I'm talking about is when. A defendant is incarcerated prior to being convicted of a felony, we pay for the upkeep of that inmate. Once they're convicted of felony, the state picks up the tab. And what frequently happens is a defendant will be convicted of felony in the Southern Regional Jail, well, for whatever reason. Bill us appropriately, they were supposed to stop billing us at that point, and they don't, they continue to bill us. The law changed in twenty eighteen, and one of the other things that I'm going to do. Uh, here in the next couple of months, Ruth has got me the jail bill, is going all the way back to when the, the law went into effect. Um. I'm gonna have staff go over those over the next several months. And see if we can't find mistakes going all the way back to twenty eighteen. Um, I'm, I'm guessing we're going to, particularly right after the law went into effect, but, I mean, I. I don't see why we shouldn't review them all the way back to when the law changed, we could, we could certainly put some more money into the county's pocket. Um, as far as salaries in this regard, as far as the office. Prosecutor's office is concerned, um, last year, the county commission was very generous, gave my employees. Um, raises, I'm not asking for raises for the employees this year, not that I don't necessarily think they don't deserve it, but. Um, I think it uh, loses something if I come in here every year and ask for more money, and ask for more money, and ask for more money, but. The county commission was very generous last year, and in what it gave me to pay Jennifer Crane, of course, Ms. Crane. Uh, left our office and took a job in Canawha County, and she seems to be doing well down there, she, she is most certainly missed. Uh, by all of us, uh, and her expertise is certainly not something that is ever going to be replaced, it's gonna have to be earned by the, the other staff over time. But, but I'm essentially asking that the salaries uh, that. Um, are listed on the budget proposal and the current pay rates for each of the employees. Uh, remain the same as it was last year, but like I said, with Jennifer's departure, that amount actually decreased. Um, I didn't think it was appropriate for me to take that money and then just simply distribute it to everybody else, because it's, it's not my money, it's the taxpayers' money. And I didn't feel that that would be an appropriate way of dealing with that, so that's, that's why that amount is actually going down. Um, the next several line items, I don't feel the need to address as far as spike attacks and retirement and. Vision dental and health insurance, um, on travel, I am asking for an increase of five thousand dollars, but I'm essentially. What I'm, what I think is a more appropriate way of dealing with this is I'm taking five thousand dollars, which was budgeted last year for training and education. And shifting it over to travel. Um, the travel line item pays for a number of different things, it pays for. Um, when we have to extradite a defendant from out of state. Um, the prosecutor's office ends up paying for the travel expenses of the law enforcement officers that go to the other jurisdiction to. Uh, bring that defendant back here, sometimes we have to pay for airline tickets, sometimes we have to pay for. Um, hotel accommodations, sometimes we have to pay for food. Um, this is also the line item we use to pay witnesses who travel here from out of state. Um, and also to provide them with accommodations and food, and it also. Uh, pays for the employees' travel expenses, for example, when we go to continuing legal education seminars. Uh, maintenance and repair of equipment, I think that's adequately covered, I'm not asking for an increase there, we're well below that line item at this point. Uh, at this point of the fiscal year, but that's one of those things that's. You know, you don't need it until you need it, um, so I'm asking that that remain the same, as I indicated on the training and education. Um, I'd like to, I'm proposing a reduction of five thousand dollars for that line item, but that. Reduction was to then be shifted over to um. The travel expense. Dues and subscriptions, I think that's fairly self-explanatory, that covers the uh. Cost of LexisNexis accounts for the staff, and it also covers the cost for the West Virginia State law fees. Uh, the next two I want to talk about together, professional services and investigation expense. Um, last year, our professional services line item was increased during the fiscal year to seventy-six hundred forty-five dollars, I'm asking that that. Be rounded up to eight thousand, and then investigation expense, I'm asking for a slight increase of. Uh, from ten thousand to twelve thousand, to give me a total of twenty thousand between those two line items. Uh, what we use this for, this is where we hire expert witnesses. Uh, to appear in court to testify, for example, uh, it's fairly common in sex offense cases, particularly involving children. That we um, will pay the services of an expert witness to come to court and explain uh, certain things to the jury. Uh, to kind of give them an understanding of why kids do what they do when they find themselves in this situation. Um, we still have the case of Rondell Reddick. Ending, which was the murder that took place down near, uh, on Route sixty-one, down near Bachman Road. Um, Dr. Owlsley with the Smithsonian Institution is a forensic anthropologist, his services were retained because the remains of the victim. Were skeletal, there was nothing left except for a skeleton, and he was able to do the evaluation. That is, that case is set to go to trial this July, so Dr. Owlsley is going to be traveling here to testify. And his uh. Uh, services will be paid for, for him to appear at trial and testify. Uh, but this is, this is one of those areas that, you know, sometimes it is necessary for us to utilize, I'm not saying that. Um, I'm not complaining about our local law enforcement agencies, but sometimes we find ourselves in situations where. We have to go to outside experts to provide assistance in investigation or prosecution. Um, the last um, part of the budget presentation, I do want to impress upon you. Um, has to do primarily with the asset forfeiture account at prosecuting attorney's office, and as you've heard me mention in the past. Uh, that is, that money comes from primarily drug cases where. Uh, money or assets associated with drug crimes is seized. Uh, we petition the court to acquire ownership of those assets, law enforcement receives. Ninety percent of the value, the prosecutor's office gets ten percent, I think we deserve a raise, but that's an issue to the legislature, not the, the county commission. Um, we had a significant increase in the asset forfeiture account from the end of twenty twenty-two. Up to the current time, about seventeen thousand dollars, that is primarily from one case, you probably remember me talking about the. Rather significant drug investigation that wrapped up last year. Um, that case alone. Um, brought us, I believe, eighty-six, that eighty-six hundred dollars from. Um, the eighty-six thousand that we recovered here in Fayette County, and the task force is supposed to pay us. Ten percent from what was recovered in Raleigh County, which is another sixteen, I'm sorry. Yeah, another sixteen thousand is what we're supposed to get, um, they recovered approximately a hundred and sixty thousand from this group that were in Raleigh County. Um. What? We've been using the asset forfeiture money for, first and foremost, is I've been providing parking. Uh, for the staff, uh, as everyone here, I think, would agree, parking is at a premium here at the courthouse. So that small lot immediately adjacent to the prosecutor's office, last year, I shared the cost with the sheriff's department. Uh, Sheriff Ridley uh, has decided not to continue the lease, so for the upcoming calendar year, I'm sharing the cost with the county commission, we're spending sixteen hundred. On that, that provides parking for five employees, and then I have also provided parking for one other employee in the adjacent lot. Um, we are in the process of replacing the laptops for the employees. Based on what GST, um, based on their evaluation of our current hardware, we essentially have. Uh, laptops that are, uh, for the most part, six years old, one of them is five years old. So we're in the process of replacing those, and that's gonna cost us about fifteen hundred dollars per computer, we're gonna end up getting five of them. Um, but I was gonna pay for that, I, I didn't think it was appropriate to ask the county commissioner to write me a check when I'm sitting on thirty-eight thousand dollars in asset. Uh, forfeiture money, so we're gonna use that to purchase the uh, the new laptops for the staff. Another area that I'm gonna be using the asset forfeiture money in is we have had some rather significant problems with courtroom technology. Uh, the Supreme Court. Has provided audiovisual equipment in both courtrooms, to give you an idea of how old this equipment is. Uh, it contains a VHS player.
Yeah.
So, um, the Supreme Court has shown some reluctance to replace this equipment. Um, I had a trial in January, I'm sorry, started. Started at one, anyway, it was in December, I had a trial in December, and basically. Needed to use the audio, audiovisual equipment, and it wouldn't work. And Judge Ewing thankfully made alternate arrangements, but it, it was certainly a less than ideal situation, so one of the things that. Uh, I'm going to look into is I'm going to try to purchase. Audiovisual equipment for the prosecutor's office that we can use when we have trials. And try to piggyback it onto the projector that. Each courtroom has, I mean, if need be, um, I may just end up purchasing a projector to use also. I have no idea what that's gonna cost at this point, but it's something I'm going to look into, so that way, we don't have to rely on. The equipment that's in the courtroom that gets used by whomever. Um, I, I don't necessarily, and I, I don't have a problem with defense counsel using our equipment during a trial, I'm not gonna. Let that happen if they have a, uh, if, if another attorney is interested in using our equipment, I'm certainly not gonna be allowing that, but if the equipment is there in the courtroom. And we're using it, I don't have a problem with allowing the other side to use it as well, I think in the interest of fairness. Um, that ought to be done, but that's, that's what I had in mind for the asset uh forfeiture. Money. And the other thing to keep in mind about the asset forfeiture money is. This, this recent drug case is an aberration. Generally speaking, we do asset forfeiture petitions. It's usually in the neighborhood of two, three, maybe five thousand dollars. So this, this one case where a quarter million. In US currency was seized is an aberr, is an aberration. Um, I mean, uh, I, I will acknowledge that we were monitoring this group and we timed the execution of search warrants to. Maximize the, the money rather than maximize the amount of dope we seize, because I kind of felt like I'd rather have the money than the dope. But uh, but in any event, but that, that case is, is an exceptional case. It's not one that. It's not one that we are, are certainly going to be seeing from one year to the next. But I think that uh, that does it and, you know, in sum, I am asking for a slight increase, I believe. Uh, it's forty-six hundred eighty-eight dollars, which is one half of one percent of an increase. Um, and at this time, if any commissioners have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I appreciate how you walk through. Um, your asset forfeiture budget and everything else and let us know how you're spending your discretionary funds. And how responsibly you spend them and how you take some accountability. For, you know, having funds that you could spend on things without coming back to us every time.
Well, I, my initial budget presentation, I had actually put in. I actually had a line item for technology and was going to ask for money for the computers and then Marilyn gave me the uh innovation on the asset forfeiture and I thought. No, I'm probably not going to ask them for that money. I, and, and, you know, it's, that's what that money is there for is uh, to facilitate the office. And, and I do want to say, we, we have a, we have a really. We have a great staff, prosecutor's office. Um, it's. It's a good working environment. It's a, I mean, it's kind of like a big family, but everybody. The, the work gets done. I don't have a problem, uh, generally speaking, with the work getting done and, and. Most importantly, I don't feel like I have to stand over my employees and follow them around and make sure that the work does get done. Um, and most importantly, I'm not hearing any complaints from either of our judges. Um, about any of the attorneys uh that are working in the office. Um, certainly they don't interact with the support staff to the extent that. Um, they do with the lawyers, but, but like I said, we, we have a good group of people. They're hardworking and they. Uh, they get the work done uh that needs to be done and I'm very happy and very fortunate to, to have them as employees. Probably next year I'll ask for some more money for it, but I thought I'd take this year off on that. Anyone else have questions, comments?
Thank you for what you're doing, yeah.
But I was hoping you would stay there for our last item.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, yes, sir. Number four.
Yep.
I think Ms. Taylor has found somebody.
We need to, we need to make an appointment to the public defender board. Howard Scott passed away sadly and. This is one of our at-large appointments. And I want to nominate uh Jerry Willoughby and I asked Anthony to stay because Ja, um, Anthony knows even more about Jerry's credentials than I, but Jerry is a former chief of probation here. Um, he is a current um COO at Raynell Medical Center. He's got a master's degree. He has a lot of experience with working with rehabilitating. Um, people in the system, so if you want to.
Yeah, you, Jerry's also, he was uh actually a former CPS worker too, so he's got a significant amount of uh involvement with. The clientele of the public defender office. They handle not just criminal cases, but they handle abuse and neglect cases, which is what CPS is involved in. So Jerry has experience in that area and then obviously become a probation officer. He's got experience in, in terms of the criminal justice system and how it operates. When I interacted with Jerry as a prosecutor and as a defense attorney, I, I have no complaints. He was very thorough. Uh, did a good job as a uh. Uh, a probation officer and as a CPS worker, I think he'd be a good, I think he'd be a good candidate for the board for the, the public defenders office.
And his is one of the names the public defenders office gave me, the one I thought was most qualified.
And it's my understanding that um. You had, you had talked to Jerry and he said he's willing.
I did, I reached out to him. I mean, he did make a joke about whether snacks were served, but otherwise. I said, bring your own. Probably not.
I think Jerry would be a, a good uh, yes, candidate to be, you know, public defender award.
I think we'd be lucky to have him. And really, um, basically they just review the public defenders office budget. And, and kind of like the community corrections board, they um make recommendations. They have to hire or fire employees, but. Otherwise, it's, it's pretty pro forma what they do. Yeah, anyway, so that's my motion to appoint Jerry Willoughby to the public defender board and the vacancy vacated by Howard Scott's passing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Anthony.
Oh, you're welcome. Motion to adjourn?
Yep.